We're going to give each of them two minutes for an opening statement. So you know who they are and why they're running. And then after that, one minute for any other response from a question and for closing. So that everyone gets a chance to have their words heard. If the gentleman with the camera would please move. We have him. Come on, sit down.
This moment of faith.
Okay. We didn't flip a coin or anything. I'm just going to start with Mr. Anastasio. Do it, we have them seated alphabetically. It makes it easier for me because I can't see all their names from here. So for your two-minute opening statement, Mr. Anastasio. It's all yours.
My name is Edward Anastasio. I am a lifelong resident of this city. I was born here. I went to grammar school here. Went to junior high school and graduated high school, along with a few of the other candidates as well. I look out and I see many friends and other classmates of mine here. I wound up deciding to run for council because of cost. And it's not the cost that they all spew out with charts and graphs and dollars and cents. It's the emotional cost that has taken on to the community here. I professionally work as a photographer and I work moving around the streets of this city on assignments, on hires. And people tell me things, citizens, tell me directly. Especially senior citizens, they feel a sense of disconnect, that they've been disconnected from the community entirely, that there's no way that they can bring back what they used to have. Simple places where they could go and gather freely and associate with each other. Friends of mine that we've gone to school with, they don't talk about when I retire and we spend time in the city. You know what they talk about? Moving away, leaving. And when we do things in my class, and I am in charge of our high school class Facebook page that's in charge of gathering us, when someone comes in from out of town, okay? We get together then, not because we can see each other regularly, but because of the situation. The cost of fragmenting your families, people who, young people who move away, that's the cost that really you can't put on a graph. And that's why I would love to be able to help put things back together with Mr. Grant in my other campaign.
Thank you. Joy Bestelli, opening play statement, please.
Good evening. My name is Joy Bestelli. I wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight. I want to thank Patty Burachi for putting this together with the West End Watch Dogs and also the League of Women Voters. I look forward to a meaningful discussion tonight. My family, the Vizzuli family, came here in 1908, which makes me a third-generation lifelong resident. I have served on council since 2010. I serve on the Finance Committee and on the Long Branch Environmental Commission. I've served twice as council president. And I have also been, I am a former Board of Trustees member for the Long Branch Public Library. I strive to be approachable, responsive, and dedicated to the people of Long Branch. And I remain conscious of the voice that often goes unheard, and which is often our seniors. And I make every attempt to bring those issues to the forefront. I began in politics as a community activist, working to bring awareness of the crime in my neighborhood, eventually becoming the founding president of United Neighbors, an award-winning grassroots crime watch group. I have recently received the Trinity A and E Remarkable Women Award for public service. And I'm a deacon and church administrator at Long Branch Covenant Church. I have been married to my husband Eddie for over 40 years. We have three adult children that have gone through the Long Branch school system and has launched them, all three, into successful colleges and successful careers. I also enjoy five grandsons. And thank you very much.
Next, Kate Billings.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kate Billings and I am running for reelection to the City Council. For those who do not know me, I would like to share some information about my background and my experience. In addition to being on the council for the last eight years, I am also a member of the Planning Board, where I have witnessed many developers and local residents wanting to invest millions of dollars in our city, not just south of the oceanfront that is being claimed by some people, but throughout the entire city. I am also a member of the Urban Enterprise Zone Board of Directors, the City Wellness Committee, and the Redevelopment Agency. Prior to becoming a member of the council, I retired from the Long Branch Public Schools after a wonderful career of 33 years. I served as a classroom teacher and an assistant principal, mostly in the high school. During my tenure in education, I achieved my master's degree in educational leadership. I had the pleasure, and still continue to have the pleasure, to build and maintain relationships with parents, students, and staff. In fact, I still keep in touch with a lot of my former students. I also obtained my paralegal certificate, which I obtained while working part-time in a local law office. I continue to work with the school district as a member of the Long Branch Academic Hall of Fame Selection Committee. I am also involved in some other community organizations. Currently, I am the chairperson of the Board of Directors for the Monmouth Family Health Center. The center is a federally qualified health center with three locations in Long Branch that provide affordable health care for any person who needs it. As a continuing advocate of education, I am also the founder and director of the R. Dave Billings Scholarship Fund. This scholarship fund, named after my late husband, provides educational scholarships to graduating seniors from Long Branch and Cambridge High School. To date, we awarded over $75,000 in scholarships. I work part-time in a local, yep, thank you.
Thank you. You can finish your sentence when, you know, coming around again.
Thank you.
Next, we hear from Dennis Micalay.
Hello. My name is Dennis Micalay. I'm a resident of the West End and I am running for City Council. I have a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in public policy, both from Monmouth University. I interned as an undergrad in the executive branch of state government and later, when I was a graduate student, I interned in the legislative branch. I worked in civil service for two years and I'm currently a part-time student at Rutgers Law School. And I also am employed as a physician's office assistant full-time and I'm running because a lot of the people whom I met when I was a student at Monmouth and a lot of people who I met after that time, who had always believed that they would be living in Long Branch into the indefinite future, that they would be starting their families here, that they would be buying houses here, have one by one, almost all of them, moved to neighboring communities. Asbury Park, Ocean Township, Tintin Falls. And it's because we have a destabilized tax base in Long Branch. And it's not fiscally responsible for a lot of people to set down their roots here even though they would like to. In similar fashion, a lot of people who are currently living here are thinking about retiring elsewhere for the exact same reason. The Long Branch that once existed of multi-generational families and new families coming in to start multi-generational relations with the city is a thing of the past due to the fiscal irresponsibility that's come out of City Hall for the last 30 years. I'm running to change that and I'm running to give a voice to the people who haven't had one for almost three decades. Thank you.
Next, we have Adam Ponce.
Hi. My name is Adam Ponce. I'm a professional engineer and a qualified purchasing agent in the state of New Jersey. I currently work for the, as the authority engineer for the Lakewood Township Municipal Utility Authority. And I currently serve on various boards and committees, including the Long Branch Zoning Board of Adjustment for the past three years. As a lifelong resident of Long Branch, I experienced firsthand what the city was like prior to redevelopment and how it has drastically improved the city over the years. I remember playing on the Little League fields without dugouts or outfield fences. Now we have some of the nicest recreational fields in the county, possibly the entire state. As for the oceanfront, there was a point I lived on Melrose Terrace prior to the existence of Pure Village. I remember I was not allowed to walk to the beach without adult supervision because that was considered too dangerous for a child to be alone. Other than the nostalgic Wizard World arcade, there were no activities. Now, now we have one of the nicest beaches and boardwalks in all of New Jersey where I see children playing all year long, from the play areas on the beach in the summer to the ice rink in Pure Village in the winter. I want to see these improvements continue for the city of Long Branch, from the decrease in crime, increase in green space, and to improve and increase the number of areas for the children of this city to play. I want to thank everyone for being here. I want to thank our moderator from the League of Women Voters, our sponsors from the Watch Dog, my fellow candidates that decided to show up, and especially the residents who have taken time out of their day to attend this debate about these issues of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Diana Dos Santos.
Good evening. My name is Diana Dos Santos. Thank you all for attending tonight and for the opportunity to participate in this debate. I have lived in Long Branch most of my life and attended the Long Branch Public Schools. I am an immigrant, a student, a small business owner, a wife, and a mother. We live in one of the greatest cities in the state. Our city was transformed into a beautiful, vibrant city with new parks, new businesses, and new families. We are a diverse and inclusive community that provides a home to everyone, no matter their background, and makes them a part of our community. These are the reasons I chose Long Branch to raise my twin daughters. I want to work as a team to make sure our city keeps moving in the right path so my daughters will choose Long Branch to raise their families. Thank you.
Mr. Sirianni.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Patty Burachi and the Watch Dog Committee for hosting this evening and the League of Women Voters for being our moderator tonight. My name is Michael Sirianni and I'm the principal of the Culinary Education Center in Asbury Park and I'm proud to say it's my 25th year with Monmouth County Vocational School District. I was born and raised in Long Branch. I'm the second son of Tut and Maurice Sirianni, who used to own Sirianni's Friendly Cafe, if you remember that far back. I graduated Long Branch High School in 1974. I attended Johnson and Wales College, now University. I did the Alternate Route Program to become a teacher. I went to Jersey City University to get my master's in educational leadership. I was elected 2010 and 2014 to the Long Branch City Council and served two terms as council president. As a councilman, I'm a member of the Redevelopment Committee for the city. I was elected for the Long Branch Board of Education from '87 to '90, serving as the board president, '89 to '90. I was appointed on the Long Branch Zoning Board from 2007 to 2010. I, my brothers and I received the Labuti Award for the community service that we've done. And one thing that I can say about being a councilman is I love my job doing this. I love representing the city. There are no perks to this. There is no fame and glory. We get phone calls. I go out socially where I meet people in gatherings and they'll, they'll say, "You're a Sirianni, you're on the, which one are you? The one on the council?" And I'm like, "Yes." And then they, "I have a question for you." And sometimes they're like, "Oh, no, he's, he's not on, you know, he's on break, he's, this is a party." My reaction is, "I don't care. Ask your question." I'm representing the city 24/7. And that's how I look at it. May I make a recommendation?
Would you like her to move further?
Please. These are nice people over here.
Diana, could you move into the center? I was thinking of something.
I'm looking out and she's over there. So I missed my third of minutes. Sense of humor, too. I forgot to mention that.
Okay. We're going to start with Ms. Bestelli, who has questions about, about youth. And actually, I'm putting these two together. There are three, apparently three movie theaters have been torn down, there's no YMCA. Why should Long Branch people need to go out of town for entertainment? And they list other places that people go. And so the question really is, what is your proposal for youth, young adults, and elders programs for our city? And we'll start with Ms. Bestelli.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
You got it, Tom.
I don't know why. Can you hear that? Yeah? Okay, there you go. There it is. Okay. For our youth. Our recreation programs in town are outstanding. We have our director for the Long Branch Recreation who, we have soccer programs, we have basketball programs, we have football, we have, you know, many sports activities for the children. Our library is, offers programs for children and teenagers. There's a, there's an entire area devoted to teenagers where they could go in there, they could have, they can join reading clubs, they can join, they can use the computers. There's game, game events, game nights, gaming nights. We also, for our youth, one of the things that I'm especially proud of is the number of youth that we are able to provide summer jobs for. And that, I think, is especially pertinent in our town.
Thank you. I know, it's just a minute, but.
I'm sorry. It was just a minute. Wow.
Ms. Billings.
Yes.
Same question?
Yes. Okay. I, I agree with Councilwoman Bestelli. The Recreation Department does a phenomenal job with our young people. I just happened to be riding through Manahasset Park last night. It was just the third, Wednesday night, and it was full of people. There were Little League, their parents were there, the coaches were there. We have a lot of great recreation programs. We, in fact, we just started a new one this year for you golfers out there. It's called First Team, where we will be teaching golf to the young people. We do football, we do baseball. We also, as Joy said, we, the library is amazing. And there are a lot of programs that the library offers that I don't think many people know about. And even this past summer, they offered free meals to young people to come in, have lunch, read a book, watch a film. So there are many programs for the youth, they just have to take advantage of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Micalay.
I think that when it comes to youth in our city, we do a great job in terms of sports and events like that, but I also think that we need more. I don't know if anyone can tell, but I wasn't an athlete when I was in school. Surprising, I know. But, so we need things that foster the arts, we need things that teach our students a trade, we need things that keep people occupied when they're not playing sports, because sports are obviously beneficial and an important part of our community. But there's so much more to recreation and so much more to youth. And there's a lot of people who aren't represented under the current scheme.
Thank you. I assume you're finished?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dos Santos. Oh, Mr. Ponce.
Thank you. We've heard about, from the council members, about all the recreational programs. What about the non-organized activities for the children? And people seem to think there's not many. We have the skate park. We have Manahasset Park. We have the ice rink in Pure Village in the winter. We have the play areas that were built on the beach in all the different sections. We have new arcades in Pure Village. And as for the arts, we have the Long Branch Repertory Club, or the establishment. I want to work with the mayor and the council to bring, it would be nice to bring a YMCA. They are working with the hospital, they're working with the members of the Y. This is something that takes time. It would be nice to have an indoor facility, too. And I will work towards that with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santos.
I think Adam just pretty much said what I was going to say. I know that they're trying to work for the YMCA and it's not just a city thing, it has to go with the hospital and we need the participation of the YMCA, obviously, as well. I, our rec programs are amazing. The library programs are amazing and I think Ms. Billings said it, they need to take advantage. We need to know, we need to make everybody aware of the programs so that there's more participation.
Thank you. Mr. Sirianni.
Before, before I start, in the question, I think you said seniors, for the senior citizens?
Yes, it said for seniors as well.
Since they handled the youth, I'll handle the seniors. I'm very proud to be the child of an 86-year-old mother who is still active at the Long Branch Senior Center. There is a bus that comes and picks her up when she needs to. If she needs to go to any doctor's appointments or shopping within the city bounds, they, there is a bus that will take her free of charge. They have activities. The one thing that I have to mention is the Lunch and Learn. And for my mother, she participated in a Lunch and Learn where it talked about having a stroke. When my mother was in the middle of having her stroke, she was home alone. She knew what the symptoms were, she knew that she was in trouble, and somehow she communicated because her speech went, she communicated to my younger brother via phone that she was in trouble and we got her taken care of. We were, my brothers and I were very thankful over the senior citizen, senior center, Pat and, and her staff do wonders for our community. Go out and visit them once you hit that age, please.
And finally, Mr. Anastasio.
It's interesting that you ask about youth and seniors because if you could get the youth involved in programs, like neighborhood programs, where they would have a sense of worth in helping seniors and set up like local programs, or let's say even simple things, if you knew your neighbor was a senior citizen and you could have them, help them with their trash or cleaning, simple things like that, things that keep the youth busy. It's not just citywide programs, it's a sense of unity that, that draws neighborhoods together. You know, if they can make these sites even small accomplishments, they wouldn't wind up drifting off into things like getting involved in gangs and drugs because they feel like they have something that they could plug themselves into on a one-to-one basis. That's not just like going to programs and playing sports and doing this and that. We're talking about a city here and we're talking about people, okay? We're talking about not being treated special, but having each other, treating each other human once again and taking care of each other on that kind of a level.
Thank you very much. We're going to switch subjects and we'll begin with Ms. Billings. This is about the fire department. What is your vision for the volunteer fire department? Will, it's a multi-question. Will you allow permanent residents or green card holders to serve? And are we headed toward 100% paid department? Can you do that in one minute?
First of all, I know that the local volunteer fire departments are recruiting and they have recruited some young people. I personally do not see the entire city ever becoming all-paid fire department. I believe that there's a sense of community in a fire department and I think that volunteers are a major part of the fire department. I participated in a fire training exercise in the old Stevie Manners and I got to watch firsthand our fire department in training. And it was scary for me, but they were so determined and they love what they do, both the paid and the volunteer. And I would hope that we can get some more volunteers out to participate in the firefighting endeavor in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible to turn the air off? It's kind of cold up here.
I don't know anything about the facility. We have.
Turn up the heat maybe a little?
A little fire.
Getting colder. Can we wait, keep going while you're?
Sure, while we're freezing.
Sorry about that. Okay. I don't know if I have to repeat the question for Mr. Micalay about your vision for the volunteer fire department?
I don't foresee us ever moving. Can you hear me? Okay. I don't foresee us ever moving to 100% paid fire department because my sense knowing volunteer firefighters in the city is that they have a real sense of community and a real pride in what they do. And I don't think that there ever is going to be a situation where that community no longer exists. I obviously would encourage people to join the volunteer fire departments. I know that the West End Firehouse is reopening, which is a good thing. And I would work, if elected to the City Council, work to make sure that when there are opportunities for people to sign up as volunteers, they're widely publicized as possible because I think a large part of the problem is that people don't realize there's even a difference between the fire departments, paid and volunteer. Thank you.
Mr. Ponce.
Our firefighters, firefighters in general, are essential to our community. There's not many people that are willing to walk into a burning. I would hope that the volunteers, I would hope they would never be forced out and I would fight to keep them here. It's just a matter of, I, the more people that are willing and are able to do that job, I salute and I always want them around. And I believe the fire department, I would hope they would welcome every single type of person that would want to volunteer. Thank you.
Ms. Santos.
I think that, I don't think it would ever be all volunteers. And I think that we should allow, obviously, somebody with a green card to work if they are willing to work and they want to work. I don't think it's an issue at all. I don't know how much power the city has over allowing non-citizens to work in the fire department, but I also think that when it comes to time to, to get more volunteers, that it should, I agree with Dennis on this, it should be widely publicized.
Thank you. Mr. Sirianni.
Volunteer fire department I've grown up with, my father was a member of the West End Firehouse, my younger brother Joseph, a member of the West End Firehouse, and he's also past fire chief for the city of Long Branch for the volunteer fire department. So I know firsthand about our volunteer fire department. It is an essential piece of the puzzle in this city, a fragment in the city. Volunteerism across the board, if you talk to different people, it's sometimes hard to get people to sign up. I know I have struggles with that, even at school, people, our students signing up to do things. But recruitment is very good, making them feel welcome is very important and working with them with their times. Campaign for recruitment is always needed. We're in the process of doing it. I was very happy to see it being done and I think it's great. We need it in the city. People have a comfort level when they know that the firehouse is right down the street. And that's, that's always a good feeling.
Thank you. Back to this side of the table, Mr. Anastasio.
Hello? Hello? Yes. I don't know how many of you remember this, but there used to be a fireman's fair where it would bring people together again, let's talk about the community and stuff. It would bring people together again and it would incite young people to want to actually grow up and maybe be a fireman instead of having them be someone that was just an untouchable person. I mean, you do need role models and you do need situations that would invite people to want to become involved as a volunteer. I don't think you really see much of that anymore. I think that the fire department just kind of shows up when there's a situation and young people have no idea, you know, what it's truly involved in all. It's a very dangerous occupation and I know firsthand from working from newspapers just how heroic they all have to be. Again, it's a community thing. If you feel subtracted, if you don't feel, you know, inspired by these people, you're never going to want to be one of them.
Thank you. And last, through this question, Ms. Bestelli.
Here's our community, our awesome people. We need our, we need volunteers and especially volunteers that volunteer in the fire department. I support our volunteers, our volunteer department. I support it being more diverse. I support recruiting young people as well as a more diverse population. And I, I recognize that our department is made up of very brave and courageous people. And that's not only our volunteer department, but our entire. And that's not only our volunteer department, but our entire fire department are paid as well, and I'm very proud of them. They've done a remarkable job in town, and they deserve our dedication, and our respect, and our honor, and I thank you. Thank you for their service.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to start with Mr. Mickelley. This question, the state police with the county arrested thirty-two members of the Bloods gang, I think that's what it says, in Long Branch recently. How would you address the city's gang problem? Mr. Mickelley.
The issue of gangs in Long Branch, like the issue of gangs in any community, has to be addressed from a multifaceted approach. Law enforcement is doing a great job at combating gangs, but gangs rise out of demand. People join gangs because they don't have legitimate economic opportunity, and if you want to completely eliminate gangs, you have to take away the desire for people to join them. People don't join gangs if they can find local employment, people don't join gangs if they have things that are legitimately productive to do. People only join gangs because there's no other opportunities for them, and they have nothing else legitimate to engage in. And I think that's one aspect why we really need to focus on revitalizing the local economy in Long Branch and its sustainability as an independent entity that's not reliant so heavily on external forces like developers or state aid.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Ponzi.
I disagree with the premise of the question. I do not believe Long Branch has a gang problem. Long Branch's crime has decreased by two-thirds since nineteen ninety-four. Long Branch is becoming, thanks to the strong police presence, an increase in the police force, I believe by about fifty percent since nineteen ninety-four, a much safer city. I feel the schools are safer. My sister went to the Long Branch school system. I feel the, the town is safer, I feel I can walk down the boardwalk, and I think, I feel that my nieces, nephews, cousins can walk down the boardwalk, and I don't have to worry like I did when I was a child. I really believe Long Branch is a safe city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dist... Excuse me. Dos Santos.
I agree with Adam, I don't believe we have a gang issue. It's much safer than when I, growing up. And, but obviously, it's always nice to get the kids involved in the community and in programs to keep them out of trouble, but I don't think that Long Branch has this gang violence that some people speak of.
Mr. Seriani.
We need to, we need to keep our supportive of our police department. That is gonna be the key to, and, and why we're keeping our crime down here in the city. The law enforcement training, the street crimes unit, having our police officers know the community, so that if there is something going on, I've been, since I've been on the city council, there have been things, not gang-related, but crimes, it is a city, in the city, and I always marvel how fast things are. Our police department knows what's going on, and they have caught those involved, too, also working with the county prosecutor's office. Police work hard to keep our seats safe, streets safe, and we have to be supportive of them. Thank you.
Mr. Anastasio.
Well, you can say there are gangs or there aren't gangs. I mean, I don't really know the exact numbers, but the question really would become then prevention, again. I mean, youth, you gave a sense, again, of belongings, and they were successful at some things. They wouldn't turn to things like gangs to make them feel like they had a sense of belonging, because they would already belong to something. Most, most of these young people, they don't wake up in the morning and say, like, let me go off and do something bad or get involved or something. It's, it's just because that that's where the road leads them, because the opportunity is there for them to follow that road. If you cut off that opportunity and supply an alternate road, you're gonna solve a whole lot of problems.
Thank you. Ms. Distelli.
Answering in this order is a challenge, because most of, a lot of what you have to say by this time has, has been said. But one distinction I would like to make is that I think every town has a gang presence. And I'm gonna say that because, because of the use of technology nowadays, because of the way that we have cell phones and internet, gangs don't all have to be in the same city anymore. They're all over, and we do need to continue to address it, and we do. We have our street crimes unit, which is a very strong unit, and they're out there every day, and they're aware of the problems, any problems that we do have, they're aware of them, and I see them fighting them every day. And I'm very proud of the fact that we did, we were part of that sting that, that got thirty-two people, and that was with the help of the county and, and other surrounding police forces. But that's really, I guess, all I have to say on that, that rather than bore you with more repetition.
Ms. Billings, you can pass if you want, or you can...
No, I won't. What I'd like to say, when I was in the school system, there was a couple of years back in the early two thousands where, I don't know if it was really gangs or wannabe gangs, and I found the best solution was the schools working together with law enforcement. And students were very good about if they knew something was gonna happen, or if they knew what had happened on the street the night before with possible gangs, they would come and talk to the administration, or they would talk to teachers who had taught to us, and we would get the police in. So cooperation between the school system, the staff, and the police department is crucial to working against gangs. Also, the street crimes unit was just restarted after we lost the police officers. We didn't have enough, but now we do have the street crimes unit back. Thank you.
Okay. Change to the subject, looking at climate issues, and I believe the first speaker will be Mr. Ponzi. Is there included in the master plan requirements for energy efficiency and sustainability? What are they, if they are there, and how do they apply to new development? Master plan requirements for energy efficiency.
I'll be honest, I'm not currently on the council, so I do not know the exact master plan requirements for climate change and efficiency. I do believe that cities can work and put in programs to improve always energy efficiency. Where I work at the Lakewood Township Municipal Utilities Authority, we just put in a solar field for, to be more sustainable for the city of Lakewood. And I believe that can be done in different ways. They have a solar field here at the high school that is for sustainability. There's always ways to improve it, and I would always work towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Dos Santos.
I'm also not currently, I'm also not currently on the council, so I'm not quite sure what the master plan is. I believe that the city, first of all, I'm a huge supporter of climate, of, not climate change, I don't want that to happen. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I'm a huge supporter in getting things done to make the environment a better place, and for our city to start participating in maybe more programs, maybe such as the no bags and usage anymore. I know some cities have done that, and I think that would be a good thing to look into. Thank you.
Mr. Seriani.
In regards, in regards to climate issues with our new development, when we meet with the developers, we do talk about building materials, windows, heating, AC, land coverage, we talk about drainage, they go through CAFRA, Environmental Protection Agency, if they're close to the water. All of those are review agencies that review every project before it's being built, or before it gets the approval for it to be built, and we hold very firm to those. One of the most important things, I feel, is that the federal government, which is not in our realm, but that needs to realize that there isn't a climate issue, that we do have to work on that, and they have to stop rolling back the guidelines that were installed with Obama, and now this gentleman feels that it's okay to cancel them out. As the mayor said earlier, we follow the law. We don't make up a law, but we follow the law, and we need these guidelines so that we can enforce them. Also, we lean on our environmental...
Mr. Seriani.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Coming back around, Mr. Anastasio.
I'm also really not in the loop on the exact thing and, you know, how they're handling the climate change, but I'm sure there's plenty of, you know, things in place for government funding, and I'm sure we'd be willing to work with anything that would help benefit the city across the board. Other than that, I'm really kinda, you know, have to save that for maybe the next debate and look into a little further.
Okay. Yes, next.
Okay. We, we do have in our master plan an ERI, which is our environmental resource inventory. And I'll get, I'll talk about that in a minute if I have more time. But we do encourage our developers with green initiatives, with incentives in place for all redevelopers and any, any developer. We, we also have as part of, I can't tell you exactly what those, you know, incentives are off the top of my head, but we also have as part of our master plan Transit Village, which has been approved by the state, and this is, encourages pedestrian traffic, which I'm very excited that, which is gonna be near the train station, and it encourages public transportation rather than just our own personal vehicles. And that, that is in place now, and we, we also, with our environmental commission and our green team in town, encourage volunteerism and have many opportunities for that. Thank you.
Ms. Billings.
As a member of the planning board, I'm involved in informal hearings and the formal hearings. With the developers that come in, our board is very cognitive of green and sustainability. Quite a few of the new projects that'll be coming in do roof gardens, we worry about stormwater drainage, where's that going, how is it gonna affect the neighbors? The board does take a lot of time making the project the best it can be. Thank you.
Okay, and lastly, on this one, Mr. Mickelley.
So, I'm not familiar with the specifics of the master plan, and it goes without saying that I obviously think we should invest more in green energy, and look at things like solar panels and wind turbines. But I think the real issue is, going forward, we have to make sure that we're prepared for rising sea levels. Look at the development that was just put on the former Takanasi Beach Club. It's almost level with the ocean, it's mostly glass, one big storm, that's gonna be a nightmare. Driving north Long Branch after even a small rain, and the water is piling up in the streets. Now imagine if the sea levels rise any higher, you're gonna need a boat to get around there. We have to start realizing that we can't overdevelop certain areas, like wetlands and marshes, because if we do, we're asking for trouble later on. I think we really need to be more responsible in that manner.
Okay, we have one other question on this climate issue, and that is, how are you addressing flooding issues? What is the plan for fixing the situation? Ms., yes, Ms. Dos Santos.
Okay. I know that we have in the budget for draining issues, that some of the streets are being taken care of this year. Obviously, like I said before, I'm not on the council, so I don't know everything specifically that's happening, but I know that the, the council and the mayor are obviously aware, and they are doing their best to take care of it.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Seriani.
We have a draining map that we have in the city with Ms. Dos Santos referenced, too, and we have earmarked all...